I'd like to call the meeting to order. We could stand for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Mr. Derek Potlitz.
Here.
Mr. Peter Hansel.
Here.
Mr. John Moody.
Here.
Mr. Christopher Poole.
Here.
Mr. Chris Williams.
Here.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Here. And the, uh... Let's see, swearing in, if we could, anybody that plans to give testimony today or if you want to speak today, please stand and raise your right hand, please, and be sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give with the truth about the matter at this time? I do.
And the proof of publication?
The items were published in the Tampa Bay Times on August 23rd, 2023, September 6th, 2023, September 20th, 2023, October 4th, 2023, and October 18th, 2023, or by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
All right, thank you very much. So this is our time for public comment on things that are not, uh... not necessarily on our agenda for today. Uh, citizens are given an opportunity to comment on items listed on the agenda and participated by WebEx. Do we have anybody on WebEx today?
We don't have anybody signed up for WebEx today for the items.
Okay. So is anybody here to comment on something that is not on today's agenda?
We do have one individual signed up for general comment. His name is Charles Carey.
Okay. Charles Carey?
I feel hard to hear you. I'm not here, but I can't hear you enough, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me adjust my mic just to make sure. Everybody hear me? I guess nobody does.
No.
Is there any way to adjust this so they can hear me?
Hello? Hello?
Okay.
Can we hold off?
Yeah, just hold off for a second.
So I'm not going dead.
Okay. There, I think that's better, right?
Yes. Hello?
Okay.
Hey, I'm Charles Carey. I'm a lifelong member of Pasco County, and say, I am a little...
Charles, can we get your email? Can we get your, uh, your living address? We need your address.
Okay, I'm at 16033 Ward's Court. It's W-A-R-D-S Court in Dade City.
Okay.
33523.
Okay, and you've been sworn, right, Mr. Carey?
Uh, yeah, I'm a little concerned about the development, and what I want to bring up is, there's a main, a big issue in this county on road maintenance. I had several requests to please put some asphalt down on the New Lees, call it, just in Lake Golar Road, just not doing a road impression where the asphalt has sunk a little bit after they started to cull it about four or five months ago. Requesting September 20th, I put this in, and I called today and said, well, it's in planning stages. Planning stages, put some asphalt down, we're slightly dipping, getting a little worse and worse in Lake Golar Road. I think this is awful. The county cannot properly maintain this road. You got to slow down the rezoning, slow down the density this time until we can get the roads. You see the road, I'm like, St. Joe Road, there's a lot of cracks in there that was repaved in 99, and the top layer is starting to crack in a lot of places, and a lot of potholes had to be filled. When you consider this, they need to do something with the roads or any infrastructure in this county to accommodate this growth, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, well, let me just clarify, Mr. Carey. We are the planning commission, but we don't plan the roads, that's not...
No worries.
But we're happy to listen to your concerns, and we'll help, try to help get you some direction on who can solve the problem, if there, if it can be solved.
They don't take any construction considerations for rezoning and so forth and other.
Right, right. So, uh...
The county commissioner.
Yeah, did you speak to somebody at the county level?
Oh, yes. Mr. Oakley's office, Pasco County engineer spoke to me only because my brother used to be a Pasco County engineer and knows him, and that's the only, and that's the connection, but that connection is not helping me out. I talked to Mr. Oakley A., she's talked, talked to somebody, but never hear back from her. I've talked to Ms. Oakley's and don't hear back from him, so I tried and tried.
Okay, well, um, does, does, we have anybody online that can get in touch with Mr. Carey and try to help him out?
So, this sounds like something for our Public Works Department. I mean, everybody that he spoke to doesn't really have direct supervision over the maintenance of roads. That would be Public Works, I believe Jason Mickles, the head of Public Works, have you spoken to him?
No, I, I did, uh, the commission meeting and talked to him, he was newly appointed at the time, and I didn't hear back then, but I heard back from, uh, this engineer, actually being a friend of my brother's, who's a former engineer, and, uh, and they did something they appointed, this is another issue. So they, they did, it was another issue on Lake Golar Road, they had to reconstruct the cull, re-land it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just saying, all of these issues you're mentioning, so for the rezoning part, um, all fall within our Department of Public Works, so you need to get ahold of somebody in that department.
Liam, do you have a, that, a name and a phone number for him? One else?
We can provide one.
Okay. They'll get you the proper name and number.
But that's just, we're bigger than point, I think that they need to step up the maintenance of roads, to accommodate the growth, you know, we can't totally stop the growth, I understand that.
Yeah, it's all, it's a constant problem to keep up that maintenance, I agree with you.
Thank you.
So, we'll, we'll make sure you have the right contact person.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carey. Thank you for coming. All right, then, uh, I think we can get started with the regular agenda, and so I'll just go over the, uh, the way we operate the agenda, for those of you who haven't been here before. We're the planning commission, we, we're appointed by the county commissioners, we meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency and we hold public hearings, transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. Planning commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Anyone who's in opposition to any development code amendment, rezoning, conditional, uh, use, or any item where we make a recommendation to the county commission, it's important for you to attend the appropriate county commission meeting, which would follow, be a follow-on to this meeting. So we have those dates and times available, if you need that information, you can get it from our staff up here. For those of you who are not familiar with the, with the format of the meeting, we have three sections, we have continuances, that's where either the applicant or the county has requested a continuance for any number of reasons, and it's been our tradition to grant this continuance request, unless there are extenuating circumstances that call for a different decision. But then we have consent items, and those are items that, where applications have been made, there's been no objections, there's been no letters of objection, and there's been nobody, as far as we know, that, that has an objection to the application, then we'll listen to the application and we'll go through those one at a time. If we go through them and there's something there that you want to be heard, please raise your hand and we'll be glad to pull it from consent and put on the regular agenda items. And those are the items that will be fully heard and talked about by the applicant and then responded to questions asked by anybody in the audience, or if they happen to be online. So, uh, those are, those are the three sections. We, um, we allow the applicant, um, five minutes to present their, uh, presentation. Then we give anybody that asks questions or concerns, three minutes to, to ask their questions about the application, and then the applicant will have five minutes to respond. If, uh, someone has requested additional time, at least 24 hours before this meeting, in writing, we can give extra time, but I don't think I'm, uh, I don't think we have had any written in requests, have we?
Mr. Chair, we did not receive any.
Okay, thank you. So, before we start the regular meeting, let's, uh, check your phones, let's get them on the silent position so that we don't interrupt anybody when they're talking, and let's, uh, just remember to address the issues involved and not the people involved. So, uh, I think, uh, I think we've covered it all. Do we have, um, uh, minutes to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve the minutes from the September 7th meeting?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, Mr. Carey's. Okay, Liam?
Good afternoon, Liam Devine, Planning Development. The first item on today's list is PC 2, PDD 24-7683. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Crossways MPUD and Crossways 301 LLC. This is coming with a request for a continuance to Planning Commission, December 7th meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
All right. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? All right. Next.
Would you like to...
Let's, let's go through the continuance and see.
Okay.
See if we get any objections.
So, PC 3, um, PDD 24-7697, a zoning amendment in the name of Ruben A. and Maria J. Sanchez. This is coming with a request to a continuance to a date uncertain.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Was that a head scratch or was that an objection back there? Oh. Gotta be careful, it's, it's a good thing it's not, you know, you know, we're not calling for buyers here. That's right. Okay.
PC 4, PDD 24-0010, it is an appeal of Planning Development Director's approval of the Meadow Point West, um, site plan. This is coming with a request to a date uncertain. Staff would like to make the request that both parties of the appeal get up and state that they are acceptable to the continuance.
All right, so the applicant's present? Are you the applicant?
Yes, good afternoon, my name is Jane Graham, I represent Mr. Thomas Schmidt, and we are in agreement to the continuance.
Okay. Barbara?
Good afternoon, Barbara Willhite, 6327 Graham Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, 34652. I represent the developer, this is an appeal situation where we worked together with our clients and led our clients to a resolution, is to a date uncertain, so we can now submit the modified plan that we've agreed to, and we met with staff on, and they're good, so we're asking that you continue it to a date uncertain that allows her appeal to stay while we modify the plan, once the plan gets modified, she'll dismiss her appeal and will never see us again.
Well, I hope that's not true.
So, Ms. Graham, do you understand, though, that if for some reason that issue's not resolved, you'd have to re-advertize this since it's continued to a date uncertain?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually, my, my client would like to add that we have really appreciated the opportunity to work this out with Meadow Point, and we are happy with the settlement that we have.
All right, great, thank you very much. All right. So that's the, all the continuances?
That was the last continuance, yes.
All right, so do I hear a motion to approve the continuances?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve, uh, PC 2, PC 3, and PC 4 for continuances, uh...
To a date uncertain.
A date uncertain for PC 3 and 4 and December 7th, Dade City for PC 2.
I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay.
Okay, the next item on the list is PC 5, we do have members of the public here registered to speak against that, so if we can pull that item. And then the next item is PC 6, PDD 24-7726, it is a zoning amendment in Cherry Hill West MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development, veterans of foreign wars of U.S. Major Francis E., Date Post 4283 et al. It's a rezoning request from an AR Agricultural Residential District to MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development District, to allow for the maximum development of 160 single-family detached dwellings. This is coming with recommendation for approval with conditions as provided in your agenda packet.
All right, is applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay, seen no objections?
PC 7, PDD 24-7747, it's a zoning amendment in the name of Clyde J. Keys, Aaron Cutoff. It's a change in zoning from an I-2 General Industrial Park District to a I-1 Light Industrial Park District and an I-2 General Industrial Park District. This is coming with a recommendation for approval with a voluntarily agreed upon deed restriction as provided in your agenda packet.
All right, the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Seen no objections?
Mr. Chair, I'd actually like to hear this one, if we could.
Okay.
PC 8, PDD 24-7669, it's a zoning amendment in the name of Hamilton Oaks, MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development, Stephanie V. Benson, William D. Brown et al. A rezoning request from AC Agricultural District to an MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development District, to allow for a maximum development of 240 single-family detached dwellings. This is coming with a recommendation for approval with conditions as provided in your agenda packet.
Okay, is applicant present? Anyone here to object? Seen no objections?
PC 9, you're sitting as the local planning agency for this item. It's PDD 24-0021, it's a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, see pass 2228, New River Hawk, providing a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 22, changing from res 3, residential 3 dwelling units per gross acre to res 6, 6, or residential 6, dwelling units per acre on approximately 28.23 acres of real property located at the southeast intersection of the Ashton Oaks Boulevard and State Road 54. This is coming with a recommendation for approval.
All right, is applicant present? Anyone here to object? Seen no objections? Okay, is that the last consent?
That's the last consent item. PC 10 and PC 9 will be, or PC 10 and PC 11 will be regular items.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of PC 6, PC 8, and PC 9.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. All right, let's go back to PC 5.
Again, Liam Devine, Planning Development, um, PC 5, PDD 24-7744, and I'm gonna apologize for how I pronounce this name, but I'm hopefully saying it right. Um, Dow Wood, Hany, and Nimitau, Armin. It is a Euclidian rezoning request from R3 Medium Density Residential District to C2, or C, and C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to C2 General Commercial District. The future land use classification is res 9 under the comprehensive plan. The applicant proposes to develop the property with a 5,000 square foot maintenance shop and auto repair in conformance with the C2 General Commercial District standards for development. The subject site is located on the southeast corner of State Road 54 and Shaw Drive. The subject site is located within East Market and is outside the urban concentration and rural areas. This is the context of the area. A closer aerial view of the site. The surrounding future land use to the northeast, south, and west is all res 9. And the surrounding, um, zoning to the north is R3 and C2, to the east is R3 and C2, to the south is R3 and R1 MH, and to the west is C2. The subject site is undeveloped on approximately 0.86 acre. Um, the applicant has volunteered, um, to record a deed restriction to address local concerns, and this is coming with a recommendation for approval from Planning, um, Planning Development Department.
All right, I carry Liam. So the applicant's present?
Yes.
All right. Would you like to make a presentation, Shelley?
Shelly Johnson, 6400 Madison Street, um, I have been sworn, I can answer any questions that come up.
Okay.
We weren't aware of any objections, but apparently not.
Okay, you just want to have a seat there, and we'll see if there are any objections. Was there someone that had a question on this one?
Sorry, we have several individuals who've signed up, and I can go through that list.
I'm sorry, was it you, sir? About PC 5?
Yes. I believe he is registered on the list.
Okay, well, if you come up forward, come forward, please. State your name and address. Anybody that's gonna speak, you can just sit in the front row there.
I'm Jimmy Nelson, um, my address is 37604 Waverly. I'm at the southwest corner of Waverly and Shaw, that's my property, and so we just do have a lot of questions about what's going on in this area.
Okay, so what, do you know anything about it yet?
No, we just received this letter maybe a week or two ago, so we are questioning, you know, what's going on here in this area with this rezoning, because, uh, I do own that property right behind, uh, this current property.
They're asking for it to be rezoned to, let me see.
C2.
C2, okay. So it would be a, what they call a general commercial type of use? Wouldn't be residential, it would be a business property?
Well, I think that most of the residents that are here, they do object to this, changing this into a commercial district.
Okay.
So it's already zoned C1, though, it is zoned commercial already, they're just looking to change from C1 to C2.
Okay, so that, what does that mean for my property?
Just, just means the uses are a little bit, um, there's more uses allowed with C2 than with C1.
And then I hear about changing to a deed restriction?
That was, yeah, that was with another property.
There's a deed restriction included here, but that's for another...
Regarding live local.
That prevents the owner, upon recordation of the restriction, from ever developing that as an affordable housing project in accordance with one of the recently passed state statutes.
Okay, from what, the residents that live around me, um, do not want this changed to, from this residential to this commercial?
It's not currently residential, it's currently C1 commercial.
Don't speak from the audience, you'll get your turn.
I just see here that, that they want to change from residential, right here where it says on this PC 5.
The zoning map, Liam. Yeah, the zoning map, maybe you can put up there, 'cause I think it's...
From a medium dental residential district.
Or R1 and C1, or R3 and C1.
Right there. Can we see that? Can everybody see what I'm seeing here?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out, this is not something that I or the other residents in the area want.
So you got that zoning map, Liam?
So, explain, I understand you're saying you and the other residents don't want it. What is it that you're objecting to, or why don't you want this?
Because we don't want to be, uh, having to change from a residential area to a commercial area. This is gonna come about with more housings being built, which, this is going on everywhere. There's more cars and concrete, the roads are not done, my road floods already as it is when it rains. My yard gets so flooded, it's unreal, but nobody seems to do anything about this, and now they want to change it from a residential to now this, uh, commercial property in the area. So, you know, I, I don't know a whole lot about this, so I'm just stating that this is something that me and my wife do not want.
So you keep referring to the product, and maybe there's some misunderstanding here.
Let me, let me just interrupt one second, could you please put the aerial picture up rather than just the zoning?
I keep referring to the property as being residential, but the map that's in the staff report we've been provided shows that this is C1 commercial, is that correct, Liam?
It's, it looks like the map in the staff report's a little bit inaccurate.
So, so if I can, if I can explain, um, the image, the property is actually C, R3, as it's in the title, R3 and C1. So when staff was reviewing this, we pull all of the previous rezonings and go through it and read the minutes from the previous approvals. Um, when this was approved, it was approved for C1, except for Lot 21, that would be the small R3 area that you'll see right there. So it is technically C1 and R3.
So that's not, that's not the same map as in the staff report here in the agenda?
Correct. The, the map, the visual, zoning visual in your agenda packet, we were waiting for GIS to provide us an updated version, because we had to correct that on the zoning map. So it's corrected on the zoning map, but we were still waiting on the updated visual.
I understand, that's, that's fine. Okay.
So, so all the pink is on C1?
C1.
Commercial.
Except for the Lot 21.
Yellow strip that's on...
Is the R3.
So, do you understand that, sir, so everything that's on that front Shaw Drive and what's the other?
54.
54 and Waverly. 54, that's all commercial already. And I also think it might be helpful if someone just does a brief overview of what's allowed in C1 versus C2, which is what they're asking to change it to.
Can I, may I speak?
Um, you're gonna need to give your name and address.
My name is Christina Nelson, 37604 Waverly Avenue, Zebra House, 33541. I'm also on that corner. So, before Raphael, that AAA towing took over and demolished everything, um, that was a home, and so he demolished all the trees, demolished the home, decided to put his AAA there, now he's building some kind of, um, what's it called? The compound?
Compound.
Compound thing. Now there's two homes over here, and I'm guessing that's what he wants to demolish and put, uh, you said a mechanic shop or something? That's what I heard, is that correct? Okay, so here's my issue. So I, we all work, we're all blue collar workers, so, um, and we have children, there's children all along our road. So with him building this compound thing, I've had numerous issues with him, so when he cut down all the trees, I had to call the county, the code enforcement, he didn't get any permits to cut down the trees, so he got fined for that. The fires, he was doing fires, the fire department had to come out three times to put out his fires, because they were too high and illegal, unlawful fires. Um, noise, noise ordinances had to come out there, Pat's place, noise ordinances, the sheriffs go out there. I'm constantly battling with these two businesses. Um, so if he puts a mechanic thing, you know, mechanic shop right there on the corner, I'm gonna have to battle with that as well. I'm in bed at 7 o'clock because I have to get up at 2:00 a.m. for work, um, I work 10-hour days. So I, personally, I own my home, a, a, a lot of us own our homes, I don't think it's fair that they should be able to come and put a automobile place on the corner when I live right across the corner from it. My grand, my mother and grandfather live right behind me, he's 98 years old, he doesn't need to be hearing that, my mom doesn't need to be hearing that, like, no, I'm opposed to it, this is not okay, it's already bad enough that down the street, that when our homes bought out the, the woods that was there and built frickin' townhomes, like, no, we were a nice, quiet neighborhood, and now we have...
Well, let me, let me just stop you right there for a second, and don't, please don't speak from the audience, because that's confusing, because we have to get everything on the recorder, and she has to translate it, and if she's got multiple voices talking from the audience...
Yes, sir.
She can't get it down right, so...
Yes, sir.
Liam, I guess the question is, it's C1 now, most of the property, can he do the mechanic shop on C1?
Not in C1.
So what can he do on C1?
So for C1, and I'm just gonna go down the list here, retail sales, daycare centers, financial institutes, fitness centers, um, public services facilities, like a police station, medical dental, um, clinics, um, residential treatment care facilities... station, medical dental clinics, residential treatment care facilities, pharmacies, would be allowed.
Okay. So is his existing business not compliant?
His existing business of.
It's towing?
Towing would not be allowed in C one.
Is there a towing operation on the property?
No, there is.
Yes, there is.
The aerial.
It looks like there's cars there, being stored, when I did a drive-by survey of the property, but I didn't see towing.
Okay, so is his storage operation in compliance?
No, that would not be.
Okay. And ma'am, can you, on the map, show me where, which property is yours?
I'm right.
Southwest corner of Shaw and Waverly.
Right there where the house is.
Wait.
Right, where the pointer is.
Okay, I see.
Right.
And sir, where is yours?
He's with me, so we're on the same.
That's most of our property.
That's a pointer, you can use that to point with. Just push the button, and, 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 there you go.
So I'm right here.
Right?
My mom is right over right here.
Right?
And he's building a, like a compound, that goes like this, right here. At one point in time, he was running a towing service, you can ask anybody on our block, because he was using Waverly to come in and out, and his tow trucks almost hit my best friend's daughter, this corner right here. He almost hit my car one time, one of his drivers. I actually followed one of his drivers into his property to tell him to slow down, because he almost hit me. And then they started using a gate right here. And I have Raphael's person remember, and he just recently stopped using his tow trucks. I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. I apologize.
Ma'am, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If the applicant were to agree to restrict access to Waverly, and put up some kind of wall or fence on the south side of the property, some opaque fence or wall, would that address any of your concerns?
He already has a fence there, so they can't use Waverly anymore, he has, so they only use Shaw. But, no, because I still hear all that noise. And so if he builds over here, where you guys are speaking about, across the street on the opposite side of Shaw, I'm still going to hear all of that. My husband works at my desk, he's the manager. He has, since I've known him for almost 30 years. So I know the sounds that come with the shop, and I'm always going to be opposed to this.
Okay. Liam, how wide is the right-of-way on Waverly?
It, um, sorry, 50 feet.
50 feet?
Yes.
Maybe, can I ask Brad to answer a question? If this were to be C one or C two, would the 50-foot right-of-way require him to do the type A buffer, or the B buffer along Waverly?
Excuse me, Brad's coming from the back this way. He's with the county.
Brad Tippin, Planning Development. Essentially, when you have a local road, it's what's across the street.
Right.
So it depends on what is across the street. If it's commercial, then it would be a lesser buffer than residential.
So their, their property is owned, looks like R one M H, at least the map that I've got.
Right, so that would be a B buffer on that side.
So it's a B, so that would require, so even, back to David's point, if he were to develop this, he would be required to plant a 15-foot wide landscape buffer, which includes either a wall, berm, fence, or a hedge that's at least six feet high and 80% opaque within a year. So, I don't know that we would necessarily, David, need to restrict it, that he'd already be required under the land development code to do that. I'm not sure that that addresses their noise concern, but.
Yeah, I'm not, well, the only potential issue might be if he tries to get access to Waverly, because I'm not sure if staff would allow, like a, a gap in the wall if he puts a driveway there.
I see.
So you might need to restrict access to Waverly. I don't think that's going to address the resident's concern.
That would have to be by, like, deed restriction or something, because this.
Well, he already has a deed restriction that he's proposing for live local. He could add an additional restriction to not access Waverly, although it doesn't sound like that addresses the resident's concern, but it, it may help the planning commission, but it.
What's on the adjacent properties, just to the west? Those are zoned C two? I'm not, are those properties disrupting you?
Can we see the aerials? It's clear to me.
The other property aerial.
Are you talking about next to him?
Yes.
Those are homes that are next to him.
Right, and then up on 54, where they have commercial, what are, what's on those?
Those, so right next to him are homes?
Right down on 54.
Up there, yes.
Yeah, but, that's not a home there.
Right, what is that?
We can't see that. Because there's a, so there's a, there's a home, right on.
Okay.
Right on Waverly, right next to him, there's a home. So what's above that, we can't see that, that doesn't disrupt us at all.
There's a home in here, but you can't see it because of the machine.
So where you're pointing at, right there, where all those things are, the, the compound thing, that was a home that he tore down, right there. That used to be a home that he tore down.
The reason he's asking is the adjacent property is down 54, all of them are C two already, and his is currently C one.
We, we can't hear those, like, there's, there's an RV, like an RV thing right there, and then there's a storage, U-Haul storage thing down, but we don't hear those. They don't, they're not like banging and welding, and whatever else they're doing across the street from us. He's literally directly across the street from us.
So, in that zoning district, you said one of them was a storage place, and the other one an RV. There's nothing that requires those owners to keep those properties that way? Any of those owners could sell their property to somebody and redevelop that, and perhaps build an auto repair shop?
Mm-hmm.
If that happened, how would that affect?
Well, it wouldn't, because they're far enough away from me.
I see.
I could, I could throw a rock and hit his office, literally.
All right.
Like, if I'm sitting on my porch, I can hear him having a conversation, as he can hear me having a conversation. I rehab wildlife, so when he tore all them trees down, I had an issue, just like when one of our homes bought all the land down the road, I had an issue. I mean, Everly's, I don't know, 500 squirrels or more, I've been doing this for 10 years. So, yeah, and for him to, you know, all the noise and stuff, I'm, that's, yeah, no, I'll never be okay with it. I have, I have children.
Brad, was there something else you wanted to say?
I just wanted to say that because I believe this is not conditionable, there is an option, unfortunately, they would be allowed to use any of the options for the type D buffer, for the six-foot screen, obviously, like a six-foot hedge, that's visual, but doesn't do that much for sound. You know, vinyl fence that's six feet tall, does a little bit for sound and visual. For sound, you would probably want something more like a wall. So if they wanted to actually add to their deed restriction, to put a wall on the backside where it would be residential, that would be probably the best way to address the sound there, as well as orientation of the site, we can address that, time of site plan, because we do have some restrictions on where those bay doors can face. So, that's an option.
I have a question for staff.
I'm sorry, say that again, Brad, about the restriction on bay doors?
So we do have some restrictions in the, in the code, as far as where, what direction the bay doors would face.
So what, how would, how would that work on this site?
So, they, they should not face the residential area. It gets dicey if you're surrounded by residential, but this is a situation where they probably would not have bay doors facing the actual residential land. But, again, if there is still sound, if there is still activity outside of the building, you know, behind the building, between them and residents, then that could be somewhat dealt with with a wall better, if they were willing to deed restrict, to do a wall back there. Otherwise, the code would allow them any of those options, they could install.
All right.
So I have a quick question for staff, too. So I see future land use here is Res nine, is that correct, through this whole area?
That is correct. So a part of your agenda packet, from long-range planning, there was a, in, commercial infill determination.
Okay, so that was going to be my question, and how we can make a zoning change that's inconsistent with the flu.
Yes.
Yeah.
There is one thing I do want to add, because it was brought up, talked about, towing services. That is not a permitted C two use, that is a conditional use in C two. So if that's the use they're wanting, which was not part of this application, it was maintenance and auto repair for this application, if they're going to go for towing, they would have to come in for, if the rezoning to C two was approved, they would have to come in for a conditional use for towing services.
Has there ever been any code enforcement action on this property for non-permitted use?
I'm, I'm currently looking at a seller record. There have been some code compliance cases that have been open, but they seem to be closed at the moment. It looks like there was removal of trees without a permit.
Okay, but it appears, it appears the business is operating there, it's a towing service, and sort of, which is inconsistent with C one, and possibly even C two, without a conditional use. I was just curious if that ever got reported.
All right. Thank you. I know you have some other people that want to speak, so let's.
I just have one more.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Miss?
Nelson.
Miss Nelson, I need to let these other people speak, you know, we.
Can you tell us about the traffic?
If you could have your name and address, please.
My name's Richard Kujawa, K-U-J-A-W-A, for the record. I live at 4813 Shaw Drive. And the road itself, Shaw Drive, is what's splitting these two properties. He has been using the property for AAA services, even though he says he hasn't, or has stopped. You can, I got it on my phone, where the gates are still open, he's got the trucks in there. You can take a picture at a different time, a different truck will be there. So, yeah, he's still, he's still utilizing, for what he says he's not utilizing it for. There's been significant damage done to the road, him coming in and out, you heard from other neighbors. The traffic that it's going to bring, or keep, it's a dirt road, and it dead-ends. So any traffic that misses the business is going to come down to the end of the road, use my driveway, turn around, go back up the road, and it's fruitless. What they're trying to do, changing it from residential C one to straight commercial C three, I guess, or C two, whatever it is, changes what they can do significantly, as opposed to the residential neighborhood that's attached to it. There's probably 15 kids living in three blocks, that play on those three blocks. Four blocks, actually, but that's a private road that they annihilated. They, they just, their trucks would drive through it. There also was a tree service company that was using in and out of there. And ideally, the gate that they're using wasn't supposed to be used for their trucks, they're supposed to be using the entrance that's on 54. The entrance that they do use was for their employees to park their vehicles, to go get in their trucks, to drive and go to work. They come out the gate, they don't pay attention to who's coming up and down the road, because, as I said, it's a dirt road. They just look forward, and they come out of there. And then they head up to 54 to get on the road, do what they're going to do. Sometimes they'll go through Pat's Place, park them up, and go out that way. But the traffic that it used, beat the road up, and they only grade the road once a month. So, y'all live in Florida, drive down a dirt road, Date City, I'm sure, I used to have a paper route in Date City, I know what that's like. But our road looks like that, and it should, and the kids shouldn't have to be worried about getting rid of my trucks. That's about it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Anybody have a question for this person here?
Where's your?
Gentlemen, sir, oh, I'm a guy, not a person.
You're not a person?
Identify as a guy, yes.
Oh. Don't get me into the pronoun thing, okay? We recognized you as one. Which one is yours?
I was at the end of Shaw Drive, where the dirt road ends. Let me see there.
Yeah.
Um, Shaw Drive?
Me, too.
I'm down here, Planning Development. Okay, I'm right here.
Okay. That's where they turned around.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I had the guy's spot.
It's not just the issue of coming in my driveway and turning around, it's about the multi?
No, I understand.
It's not so much about the, the coming down using my driveway to turn around, but the other neighbors as well. But the bottom line is, they effectively drive all the way down to the end of the road, say, okay, this is it, can't go no further. And I have my, I have a fence across at my property, and I even got reflective signs that, that, you know, it says no, I'll let it begin the road. But it's the fact that the traffic comes down all the way, then turns around and goes back up. So no matter what, you know, that extra traffic that this other thing's going to bring in, is going to be even more, I mean, 10 times that, you know, if it's a busy shop. And the kids don't really need it, you know?
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who's next? I think we had one more?
I, I own property back in, on Huron Street.
What's your, what's your address, Mark?
It's 4288 Huron.
Okay, thank you.
And I've seen all this progress. And when I bought the property, there was two houses on the lower end of it, of his property. And then he fenced it in, took the houses down, so that made it all commercial, and then took down all the trees without the fence. And he's been, like Ricky's been saying, he's been using, he doesn't pay attention to the rules. It says no trucks on either streets, he takes down the signs. It's just, he'll do what he wants. We're just bringing it to your attention.
Well, thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anybody we missed? Only get one bite at the apple. Does somebody else want to speak? Okay. Shelley?
Thank you, Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street. I have been sworn. Just to answer the traffic questions, it did a T and P, it's exempt. There's actually uses within C one that probably would generate a lot more traffic than what's being proposed with this particular use, which is the auto, the maintenance repair, enclosed shop type of a situation. They are going to be accessing off of Shaw, and they are required, it looks like, the comments that came back from traffic is they are going to be required to do, you know, mitigation, design and construction of Shaw Drive from State Road 52 to the project access. They have no problem with agreeing to no access to Waverly, if we want to add a deed restriction to that, and if you want to require that they put in a wall on the south end, they'll be happy to do that as well. And I don't know, I think that addressed all of the questions.
Sorry, we only, I gave you lots of time, so I can't get going back and forth.
I understand, but I want to know what's just being built on that property right now. It's looking like a compound.
I'm sorry, I can't take it from where you're, where you are. Does somebody have a question for this man? For this guy? I'll ask him, what's the picture on his phone? There you go.
I just want to know what that's going to be.
Is there a building permit issued on this property, for a building?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can double-check.
Where, where is that on the properties, on the, the backside of it?
This is where the houses used to be. Two houses used to be that got tore down. Now they're building some kind of compound.
Is that, I'm having a hard time, is that shipping containers, or is it a metal building? It's shipping.
Shipping containers, yeah.
Clearly, it looks like it's intended to be a building.
Is that concrete block underneath it?
They are building it, as you speak.
So can I ask?
There's no active building permit on that?
I'll wait till their dialogue is done, though.
Okay. What, what did you see, what did you observe, John?
It appears to be shipping. It appears to be shipping containers that somebody's clearly intending to inhabit for some purpose. I don't know.
What piece of property is it? I cannot see it from here on that little.
We're gonna pass it down to you, Pete.
Okay.
Can you point?
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay.
Can you, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice to put it on the map so that the audience will see it also.
Okay, yeah, there you go.
So.
I get that to.
While you're doing that.
Sergeant Peppers.
Can I ask Shelley a question while we're doing the graphic? Shelley, can you come back to the podium? So I thought I heard you say that all of the maintenance activities would be indoors. Is that accurate?
It's a 5,000 square foot building that they're gonna be building, yes. That's my understanding for auto repair.
And is that the building?
No, and I don't, honestly, I don't know. I've never ever spoken to the actual owner, so I truly do not know what he's doing on this property, just for the record. But I don't know if that's gonna be part of it or not. I really don't. But that's the intention.
Did we figure out if there's.
I mean, is that something you're willing to commit to in your deed restriction? That all the maintenance activities would be within an enclosed building?
I mean, we would have to talk to the client about it.
I mean, because what I'm hearing, the neighbor's biggest concern is noise.
Yeah.
And it seems to me that if the maintenance activity was entirely within an enclosed building, in addition to the buffer that Brad mentioned, that probably would mitigate most of the noise. But I'm not sure that, and I guess I'll ask Liam, does, does a maintenance, in the absence of a deed restriction committing that it be in an enclosed building, could they do maintenance outdoors?
And David, not to interrupt, but I've just got word that work, he's fine with that, to do another restriction that it be within closed building, so.
Well, is this gonna be auto repair?
Auto repair, so.
So that's required to be an enclosed building under C2?
Correct. It is required to be enclosed.
But does enclosed building, maybe we can ask the code enforcement officer here, does enclosed building mean that all the doors need to be shut? Because I know when I drive by Midas, they're changing mufflers and those overhead doors are open. When I drive by Tire Kingdom, they're changing tires and those doors are open, and I can hear the impact wrenches and all of that. So it's technically in an enclosed building, but it doesn't mean it's 100% enclosed and 100% soundproof either, so.
Although if it's facing away from residential areas, it may not be as bad.
That, very true.
If you don't mind, I do want to answer the question that you asked earlier, if there's any active building permits. I do not see any. The last building permits that I've seen that were pulled was from 2021 for tree removal.
Okay, and I think we're.
Also, Chris, with Pasco County Code Compliance, the answer to your question is no, the doors don't have to be closed. They have to be able to be closed.
Okay.
Okay? And just so that the board's aware, I'm gonna create a call and have one of the officers investigate this. This property for all the violations that have been brought up.
What were the violations, please?
I'm sorry?
I didn't, I don't.
I said I would, I will create a call for the officer for that zone to investigate all of the violations that have been brought up. That it's been used as a storage lot.
They haven't determined there's any violations yet.
Yeah, let's, we have to go out and investigate.
Thank you. I need clarification on that one. And one other thing, I like that. This photo here, is there any documentation to go along with that? I don't know what's a photo of.
Well, this came from. So as far as I can tell by looking over your shoulder earlier, we don't actually have any current complaints on this property. The last ones that were conducted by us were the tree removals. But with this information, I will create a call and I will have one of the two zone officers for that area investigate it and determine whether or not there are violations going on.
Thank you. That's great.
So can I ask Shelley another question?
Sure.
Given Brad's earlier testimony that the code doesn't necessarily require a wall on the south side, would your client commit to building a wall along Waverly in lieu of what the code requires?
Yes, they're fine with that. And they're also fine with the restriction that they don't access Waverly. They don't have any intention of using it, so.
Should we define the specifics of the wall construction?
Well, I mean, there are times when, again, it depends on what Shelley's client's willing to commit to, but typically, you all define the height of the wall, whether it's six feet or eight feet. And I don't know, Brad, do we ever get into the thickness of the wall, or? I don't, I don't, we don't?
Concrete block, probably.
Do we just say concrete block and that's enough?
Yeah, generally, we can, we can speak to the material of the wall and height of the wall, not necessarily the width or thickness, because those are some engineering things, depending on what it's made of.
So you could say concrete block wall of.
Eight feet, maybe.
Eight, I mean, in your opinion, do you think, which do you think, eight feet is better for noise reduction?
There are pros and cons to both whenever you bring a wall in, because it creates a visual issue from the other side as well. So if you have landscaping on the outside, then you have to have a situation where people can get from the property to be able to maintain landscaping that's buffering the big blank wall. If there's no issue with the big blank wall, then we change that a little bit. And it really just depends, you can say the materials, you can say the height. I believe there's, Liam's 30 feet from residential for any type of the building structure, so it's.
Sorry, you're talking about the setbacks for our C2?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm reading, yeah. Okay, it's 30 feet from residential.
Right, so I think that the angle, if you're talking about two-story homes south of the property versus one-story home south of the property, I don't know, there's much difference between a six-foot or eight-foot wall. There's a cost difference for the applicant, for the developer, but. An eight-foot wall can seem imposing to a neighborhood that has a lot of single-story houses, depending on what they're used to. But again, it's kind of a, picks one half dozen the other.
I'm not personally sure that a wall necessarily mitigates the sound. I'm thinking about, I walk into a home under construction that's got concrete slab floor and concrete block walls, and there's nothing but an echo in there, but yet after I've got the carpeting and the drywall in and the ceilings, then you walk in and there's no echo because you've got this material that absorbs sound. So I'm, I'm not 100% convinced. I don't know, I don't know enough about sound science to kind of make that decision, but I'm not 100% convinced that if you did like amazingly wall, that that's really going to, it may actually amplify their sound problem. I don't know.
Well, I mean, in terms of the building, to address your earlier point, I mean, Shelley could commit in the deed restriction that, that all, that the doors would be closed at all times when maintenance activity is occurring. Because the code officer said that they won't, under our code, make them shut the doors. But Shelley could commit in a deed restriction that the doors would be.
Right, and then a deed restriction would be enforced by the neighbor would have to file suit in court to enforce the restriction. That's probably a little onerous on the.
Well, actually, we're in the process of re-changing our code to say that our code enforcement can enforce a deed restriction too. So it means something that our code officer could enforce if the doors were not closed.
Knowing someone that owns an auto shop, it's, to close the doors during the summertime is pretty, pretty difficult. No, no building, so that could be very difficult for the owner as well. I think facing away from residential areas is probably your best bet. There wouldn't be too much sound traveling through the building walls.
Yeah, I tend to think if the bay doors were facing away from residential, that's gonna funnel the noise that way than the other way, yes.
As long as there's no maintenance activities outside the building.
And that can all be put in a package together to try and do this via the deed restriction, just to make it extra.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
The other problem with an auto repair shop, because I used to work on one when I was a kid, is when you're working on a motor, an internal combustion engine, you really want those doors open to allow the fuel to.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, you know, telling them to have to shut the doors and then causing another issue may be more of a problem than you're versing.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that for an auto shop.
So let me ask this question. How much room is required, they want to build a 5,000 square foot, is there any kind of site plan that they've created? My, my thinking here, I'm looking at a couple of things. I'm looking at, this truly does meet the definition of infill development. There's no doubt about it. We've got this strip of C2 on 54. He's the only C1 parcel, so I can see where this meets that infill definition. But I also hear the neighbors, and what I'm wondering is, can the building be located closer to 54 so that there's a yard behind the building? And maybe they would be willing to deed restrict activity in the yard behind the building? Or maybe you amend this application to make the C2 area only a certain depth back from 54 so that there's some transition to help appease the concerns of the residents? What I see with the other C2, if you can put the map up, is that there's this buffer of R3 or R1MH properties that go C2 and then start stepping down to the neighborhood where there's no step down here in the zoning.
So we have the, you know, the activities that occur within the building already. If those doors are an issue and do need to remain open, you know, the activity's not gonna be occurring out in the yard. It's gonna be occurring in the building and the sound is going across the yard. So, you know, to, you could probably further restrict and deed restrict activities with, behind the building if you wanted to, just to make sure that sort of things couldn't happen back there, but you know, that's. I wouldn't want to get too complicated.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm wondering, I'm thinking aloud here, would it be easier, assuming Shelley's client was willing to agree to it, that there'd just be a requirement in the deed restriction that the site plan come back to the planning commission at a notice public hearing so that you all see exactly how this building is situated on the site, what the buffering is, and the residents have a chance to see it too? So you're looking at an actual site plan for these issues rather than trying to think about all the possible issues to put in a deed restriction. Might just be easier to have the site plan come back to you.
So do I continue, Jermaine?
No, I'm suggesting that if Shelley's client's agreement with it, that there would just be a requirement in the deed restriction that the, I guess, is it PSP or PDP?
PSP.
That the PSP would come back to the planning commission at a notice public hearing before it's approved. So that you have a chance to weigh in on these issues, such as building orientation, buffering, you know, where the doors are.
If you're orienting towards 54 and there is a parking area, because shops need parking areas for.
Part of my problem that, though, is that this is, it's a Euclidean zoning, and even, that's, that addresses the proposal that this guy wants to use it for. But he could turn around when this is done and sell it tomorrow, and it could be a completely different use. And then we've got this deed restriction that burdens the next user, which may be less offensive, more offensive, I don't know.
But I mean, you could say, you could say for any use, any non, any city use that is only a C2 use. In other words, if they come in with a C1 use, it doesn't come back to you. No site plan comes to you. But they are requesting a change from C1 to C2, so I think you would have the right to ask to see a site plan for any use that's permitted only in Z2. I mean, it's up to the planning commission and see if the applicant would agree with it. But I'm only throwing it out because it avoids you trying to come up with a bunch of requirements to see, and then see if Shelley's in agreement with all of them at the dience, which may be difficult.
Shelley, how do you feel about that suggestion?
Not to confuse us anymore, David, but.
How do the residents feel about that suggestion?
Looking at 525.4 under special exemptions or exception uses, the repair garage is a potential special exemption under C1.
But then if you came back as a special exception.
Assuming this is vehicle repair.
So.
Then we'd have the right to condition it.
Then you would have the right to condition it. So I guess I'll ask Liam, is there a reason that this came in as a C2 as opposed to a special?
So under permitted uses for C2, number 18, garage and maintenance services, all work shall be performed inside of a building. That's number 18.
I understand that, but the question is, could they have done the same thing as a special exception in C1?
A portion of the site is, is not C1.
Oh, it's because of the R3 portion. I get it, okay. They had to rezone anyway because of the R3 portion.
All right, understood.
And then it's consistent with the surrounding C2?
So could the application be amended to rezone the R3 portion to C1 and then come back as a special exception wherein the appropriate conditions could be applied? It's better than to deny it.
That's not anything on any new land. That's land that was involved in this originally. So that could be an alternative solution potentially to.
Yeah, I mean, if you want a recommendation, if you want, I don't know how the applicant feels, but.
I'm sure they don't like it.
But you could, in theory, say if you don't want to approve a rezoning to C2, but you would approve a zoning change from R3 to C1 for the R3 portion. That, that's a lesser zoning than what they requested, so I guess that's within your recommending authority.
Well, you know, just to throw my hat in the ring, I, I'm, I'm very reluctant to approve this under the circumstances that have been presented here, and mainly because this particular applicant evidently has been, done a lot of things sort of under the.
That's my problem too.
And I don't want the residents to have to come back here every time there's a violation and report it, and then wait for somebody to deal with it. And, you know, we don't need those kind of activities. So it's a matter of trust, you know, with me. So the way that you just suggested, that would be the only way I would vote in favor of it.
So you, the recommendation would be to change the R3 portion to C1 and deny, deny the C1 to C2 change?
We'd have to have a separate hearing for the special exception request for.
That would be a whole new application.
Right.
So by changing the entire site to C1, you do leave, you do make it that possibility available to them to come in for the special exception approval.
To me, that makes a lot more sense for everybody, including the residents. And I think there is a case to be made for the, for the residents here, you know. They're hardworking people, they've been there a long time, you know, and they've had to deal with a lot of violations in the past. Every time there's a building going up and there's no permit, there's, you know, been.
Hey, Liam.
Everything that has been done there has basically not been approved in the C, in the C1 zone.
Can I ask Liam one question?
Yeah.
Liam, why was the, in the prior rezoning that went to C1, why was the R3 piece excluded?
So that was not in the minutes from the meetings from when it was approved back in, I think, 81. That was left out. That was a change that was made with staff and the applicant, and it was not part of the record. So I'm not sure why, but the applicant agreed to it, and it was discussed at the hearing, but it wasn't said why they agreed to it, and that wasn't a part of it. So I don't have an answer.
Was there a house on it or something at the time?
I, I bet that's what it was. Probably somebody lived there and they owned the property around it.
So, and I do want to clarify something also. You're saying auto repairs and maintenance? Maintenance and auto repairs are definitely, are different. So auto repairs would be like an oil change, a tire change, something like that. A maintenance could include welding. So that type of use for an auto maintenance facility and an auto repair is, are different.
I'm not sure I understand the difference.
A Jiffy Lube versus a, like a mechanic shop where you're pulling an engine out?
Correct.
So are you saying Jiffy Lube is maintenance?
Auto repair.
Well, that's, well, I don't know, an oil change, that's not repair, that's maintenance. Welding, if we get into that, then that could be fabrication, and that could get into C3 and I1.
So Liam, the special exception use in C1, what is that?
So that would be an automotive service. So that could include sales of spark plugs, batteries, tire services, repairs, replacement of hoses, belts, brake fluid, light bulbs, fuses, floor mats.
So that's different than what's allowed? So that's different than what's allowed in C2?
Yes, because that wouldn't include any painting, welding, storage, operating conditions of the vehicle. That would be a C2 for maintenance.
More in-depth repair. Is the theory that the C2 use is more in-depth and noisier, basically?
Correct.
So then for what they want to do, they would need C2?
Correct.
I'm just suggesting you all.
I'm sure Shelley.
I was just going to suggest, because we weren't aware of any of these issues before we came here today. So if we could go ahead and just move to continue this and I can, we can meet with the residents and get the, get the client here and, and really address, you know, whatever needs to be addressed. I feel like we're a little flat-footed on it right now, so.
Personally, I think it's a great idea.
Day uncertain or particularly day?
Yeah, whenever the next planning commission meeting is, I don't have the calendar.
We're here.
Date City.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
But Shelley, to add, to kind of to this whole discussion that's going on right now, what is the intended use of the, I mean, are they going to do more heavy auto repair and, you know, pulling engines out, or are they, were you just talking about kind of basic maintenance or what?
Yes, the way he's described it to us is maintenance. But again, I think that's something we need to talk to the client about and get all clarification of those facts for everybody.
We look at street view over here, he's got banners on the fence that say AAA, clearly running a towing service here.
Yeah, and find out what's going on.
Just as the neighbors have testified.
But, and then we can also meet with the residents, because again, I wasn't aware of any of this until just now, so.
Could you, I recall not too many months back, we had a conversation, a lengthy one, regarding towing and towing services. If you can get some clarification on that too, I have that done as one of the questions that I would like to see answered is towing. I recall that, that statement was made and that there was a limited time limit that they couldn't do it after a certain time because of residents and their peace and quiet. So clarification on that might come down.
Yeah, I definitely will find out all that information.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Motion to continue to.
One second.
What's the date Liam? Hold on one second.
December 7th, 1:30 in Date City.
To December 7th at 1:30 in Date City.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, vote, opposed, like sign. Okay.
Hopefully, in the meantime, we can also get an update from compliance, from our compliance inspection too.
Right.
Code compliance. Excellent, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No problem, glad to help.
So the next item would be PC7, PDD 24-7747 in Clay J. Keys, Aaron Cut Off. I, I don't know if we just have a question or if you want a full presentation.
I have more questions on that, I don't think we need a presentation, because I'm generally not opposed to the, I just had a couple of questions, I'm not sure if it's more for Joel or whoever. But, you know, I travel that, I mean, I just came through that intersection today on the way up here. So my questions are really related to traffic concerns, access, utilities up in that area, obviously where it is. I'm assuming there's capacity for, for that sort of use up there. And then the final one is wetlands, wetlands-related issues on that site. So I don't think we need a presentation, if we can just kind of talk.
I'll take a stab at those. Joel, two, land use consultant, Palm Harbor, Florida. I represent the property owner, who's Mr. Jimmy Keys, and also his contract purchaser, who is Troy Mashmeyer at Mashmeyer Concrete of Florida. The prop, the entire property already is IH heavy industrial land use and I2 heavy industrial zone. So what we're actually doing by working with staff is we're actually restricting the, the existing heavy industrial zoning to just the back half roughly of the property, changing both frontages to light industrial. So it's actually a downzoning of intensity from the existing heavy industrial to slightly over half. The specific questions are, or answers are that on the traffic, because this is an industrial use which is favored by the county, that's job creation, it is exempt from the timing and phasing analysis, but it does have to go through standard site access review, which will happen at the time of site plan and construction plans. The client already, the real decision on access is controlled by FDOT.
Right.
Because of State Route 52. They've already had their application meetings with DOT, have already been given by DOT the lineal distance from the intersection, both on 52 and Aaron Cut Off. They're pushing those access points as you would expect. The one on 52 as far west as pro, as possible, and the one on Aaron Cut Off roughly as far south as possible to maximize the setback from intersection. DOT has indicated that they're okay with the access at the points they've given them.
Is that what's represented on the, the master?
Yeah, it's what is represented on the, the conceptual plan there, to wield the graphic. They also have already gone to flip mud, SWIP mud for the wetland impact and the mitigation. That's already approved by SWIP mud.
Okay.
So they literally are waiting for the zoning change so they can immediately go to site plan and construction plans and permitting to get this concrete plant going in the back. The current plan is to leave all of the frontage land as is, as, as buffer until they get a light industrial user for the front part. And who knows, that could be office flex, that could be technology. So they really don't want to design the 250-foot frontage on both pieces until they have that user. Hopefully that'll end up more of an industrial office park look on the front, which of course will give you a great 250-foot buffer with building buffer from the, the heavier use. And obviously a better result than having literally heavy industrial all the way, all the way up to the road frontage, which could happen now. So in a nutshell, that's it. Yeah, they, they pretty much have engineered this. They got the, the wetland permit, the FDOT approval, everything set.
How much of the wetland is going to be impacted?
I don't know, I don't have that. The civil engineer was handling that separately. I'm not sure where they came out on what part of that will be impacted, but it was reviewed and approved. My understanding is already permitted by SWIP, including whatever the mitigation requirements are.
I bet, so presumably it's going to be D cell somewhere on the east end.
Probably, you know.
I mean, that traffic drives, like driving like bad, I don't know.
And as you know, see, DOT already has construction plans well along the way for that stretch of 52. So everything that they do, that's why they went to DOT first, they're going to be told by DOT exactly how to construct that access in the D cell. The additional right-of-way for 52 is all coming on the north side at that location. That's, but we also, we voluntarily agreed because staff asked, even though there'll be sidewalks to nowhere, we've agreed to build the sidewalks on 52 and on Aaron Cut Off. Although we all know they're probably not really going anywhere productive.
I bet you I know where to get the concrete.
And for what it's, right, for what it's worth, as the memo mentions, this was one of the designated preferred industrial preservation sites that TBRPC identified. And the board actually asked at a June board meeting that I was sitting at, they said, "We really need another concrete plant in the 52 I75 corridor" for all of these projects that they've approved. So it's in a great location to minimize distance for 52.
I agree.
We have Central Pasco Employment Village, Pasco Town Center, Wildcat Grove, you, you name it, Moffett. So it's, it's a great location. Of course, we have the existing Cmax plant, is already adjacent, which Mr. Keys originally developed and operated, but he sold that to Cmax.
No, and that's why I said initially that I'm not opposed to it, I just, you know, wanted to kind of go through the question, so.
Double balling in the details.
I think it's a great project for the area.
But they did go engineer this before they started because in order to commit to this 250 light industrial frontage, they had to make certain that they can get the footprint of the batch plant on just that back corner acreage. And, and be able to handle that depth. Because we also, as you see, we agreed to additional buffers on the front, even though it's light industrial, additional buffers beyond what the LDC requires. Just to try to keep that 52 corridor looking the way we all would like to see it look when it's developed.
Just so, could you ask, is there any discussion with DOT of a light requirement at coming at that intersection that you're aware of?
Yeah, they gave you the usual answer, that they'll, they'll let you know when they think that's warranted. But my understanding, as I recall from having also done Central Pasco Employment Village and Palmetto Ridge, I think on the county's long-range plan, it actually contemplates a realignment of Aaron Cut Off actually becoming Collier Parkway coming north. And it actually is going to cut off and go up through Palmetto Ridge. And so that it then ties back to the interstate, in which event this particular section of Aaron Cut Off would no longer be that main thoroughfare. It would become more, which would be a great result for us. You know, if we were more isolated on just kind of a local connection. So I think DOT's position is it depends on ultimately what's done with that Collier Parkway extension that really would replace current Aaron Cut Off.
Yeah.
Somewhere there around the, the Sporting Place range, that it would veer east and then cross 52 and go right through the center of Palmetto Ridge and then curve and go due east I75.
Yeah, that traffic movement is, is dangerous there, kind of coming from area particularly for.
So that, that whole intersection may change in terms of volume. I think that's the plan. And that's what the county's long-range transportation map shows, I believe.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Joe, are there any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
I'll gladly make the motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Very good. All right. What's next Liam?
The next item is PC10, which will be presented by Gavin Kobe.
Welcome Gavin.
Good afternoon, Gavin Kobe, Planning and Development. So this was going to be item PC, let's double check, PC10. And this is going to be an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a map and text amendments to future land use elements, Chapter 2, Goal Flu 6 of the J. Ben Harold Villages of Pasadena Hills, to expand the boundaries of the special district, amend the boundary of Village B and F, and figures PH1, PH2, PH3, 4, 4A, 5, 6, 7, 8, and amend tables PH2 and PH3. And other amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for separability and effective date. So. So this is PUD 240040, the VOPH Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the Hamilton Oaks MPUD. And so we're trying to do three things, or two things, I'm sorry. First, our map amendments to include additional parcels into the district for the Hamilton Oaks MPUD. The, I think it's PC8 that was on this agenda, had actually two sets of conditions. One of them is asking to be involved in the villages of Pasadena Hills. If the BCC approves, these would be the, the necessary amendments to, to the comprehensive plan. And then number two, separate from the Hamilton Oaks stuff, we're doing map and table amendments to shift the boundaries of Villages B and F and transfer entitlements. So here's just the current Pasadena Hills area plan boundary. And then if you look to the south there, highlighted in red, you can see where the additional parcels are going to come in. And then here's the current village's location map. And then again, you can see in red highlight where we're shifting the Village B boundary. And then again, adding all those additional parcels at the bottom of the south. We're also transferring some of the entitlements with the land from Villages F to Village B. Here is just that table showing the conversion of the entitlements. And then, so the addition of the parcels to the south, Hamplin Oaks, is actually right off the Zever Hills bypass. The Hamilton Oaks MPUD will be required to build the Zever Hills bypass. If, if included in VOPH, they would get credits. If not, then they wouldn't get credits for it. And to the north, that future connection with Village B, or with Village F and B will help, that transfer of entitlements will help a developer create a connection from Prospect to Curly. So there are some benefits to the proposal. Like I said, Zever Hills bypass is identified as an external proven for VOPH. The developer will design, construct, and permit a portion of Zever Hills bypass in exchange for credits if they're into, into the district. These additional parcels will increase TIF funds for the 240 single-family detached units that are added. And then shifting village boundary allow, allow for a developer to extend Prospect Road to Curly, like I mentioned earlier.
So Gavin.
Yes.
To your point, if you could go back to the prior. So number two.
Oh, sorry.
I think you just need to make that clear, that you're increasing TIF funds in VOPH. Because, and I think you need to coordinate this with OMB because they had a question about what the effect is of this change. I think it's probably going to increase TIF funds in VOPH, but probably is going to decrease the TIF funds in the countywide TIF. So I'm only bringing this up because the, OMB has raised this question and so you probably need to clarify number two. Coordinate with OMB and clarify the way you state number two.
Yeah, absolutely, I have no problem clarifying that and reaching out to OMB and making sure. And these are the, the policies in the, in the VOPH Comprehensive Plan that support this proposal. And so this is coming with a recommendation of approval to the Comprehensive Plan, or of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the Board of County Commissioners.
Did I understand you correctly, you said you're taking entitlements from one village and adding it?
Yeah, because we're shifting the boundaries of the village, moving land from one village to another, we're transferring those entitlements as well. So it's not.
Does that have a negative impact on landowners in the village in which entitlements are being removed?
It, so there would be a decrease and obviously in Village F, but there's still a bunch of entitlements in the village for developers to take from. It's more so to make sure that we're not just moving land away from, or moving land without the actual entitlements. So we could see.
I understand, but my question has more to do with notice. Were those people noticed that this was going to happen?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can you go back to that graphic showing, showing that, please?
Which one would you want to see?
The one with the transfer of entitlements?
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you.
So perhaps I missed it, but this is for a plan development or is this development on those extra parcels?
So the additional parcels are going to be for an MPUD. Actually, it was PC8 on this agenda that was just approved. BCC will have the decision on basically if they approve it being into VOPH or just outside the county.
Okay, the MPD that was approved works either way. They have conditions that apply only if they get put into VOPH.
All right, any other questions? All right, is there anybody here, anybody else here to speak on this? All right, I see no one. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, and for the discussion on the motion, not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
I just want to make a point that we do need to be careful because as Mr. Goldstein has mentioned, I know OMB is looking at it, but anytime we add to VOPH, that affects our school, you know, our school calculations and all that too. So I'm not, I don't have an issue with this one, but hopefully we're not, hopefully we're not adding a bunch.
240 single-family homes.
Yeah, that's not worth, I'm fine with that.
But I guess along those lines, I mean, those entitlements are the client for, they're using up the entitlements that are within the VOPH.
They just shifted.
They just moved them around.
Well, I don't know about.
Well, actually technically, these entitlements were added by virtue of a complaint amendment that was already approved. The good news for the school district is because by going into VOPH, they're not going to have to pay the surcharge.
Correct.
That they would not have had to pay if they were out of VOPH. So the school district in theory would be getting more money now that they're in VOPH than otherwise they otherwise would.
Although, yes, agreed.
Although, yes, agreed and, but there is a slight increase in the number of students generated as well.
I'll disagree with this.
Yes, but I agree.
You can't have everything in your way.
Why not?
You didn't learn that from your mother?
But I agree with Mr. Williams, if it got to the point where those increases were affecting the student generation assumptions that you use to decide the number of schools you needed in VOPH, it would become an issue.
Yes.
Not sure two forty is it, but.
Correct, it's not.
Could be at some point.
Yes.
We don't get, we don't have a lot of people clamoring to come into VOPH.
And I, yeah, I wouldn't think so. So I wouldn't think this would be happening a lot, yeah.
So we do have a motion, we have a second. And I think we've had discussion, anything else? Any other discussion? If not, on paper, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay, carries.
All right, so I also, oh, I'm so sorry. I'm also handling the next one, so you get to deal with me for just a couple more minutes.
Oh, that's, now I'm disappointed.
Okay, so, uh, PC, I'm so sorry.
PC eleven?
Yeah, PC eleven is an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, section six oh two, J Ben Harold villages of Pasadena Hills, stewardship district, revisions to exhibit six oh two A, six oh two B, six oh two D and six oh two E, and amending other sections as necessary for internal consistency, providing for applicability, repealer, separability, inclusion into the Land Development Code in effective date. So this is P D D twenty-four zero zero forty-one, VOPH stewardship district amendment for the Hamilton Oaks MPV. So this one, we're doing three things. Uh, we're adding those additional parcels into the, the actual tax parcel exhibit. Second thing is we're doing the map amendments now for the Mastroiwe Plan. And then, uh, third, which is not associated with the Hamilton Oaks thing, is we're allowing the property owners groups credit exhibit to be administratively approved. So here's an exhibit just showing the addition of the parcels, uh, redlined into the actual Um, here in the south, you can see the addition of the parcels we just talked about. And then again, the addition of the parcels we just talked about. And surprise, the addition of the same parcels, the Mastroiwe Plan, Mastroiwe Plan, the key map. And again, in the Mastroiwe, Mastroiwe Plan, exhibit A. Exhibit E. And then the twenty sixty-five Mastroiwe Plan intersection details. And so we're also amending exhibit six oh two D, like I said earlier, uh, amending the POG credit list. Um, with the fee credit link coming online, uh, a bunch of transactions will happen, you know, people buying and selling credits. So instead of having us come through the public hearing process over and over again, we're just asking that PDD administratively approve this. And this comes with a recommendation of approval of the stewardship district amendment to the Board of County Commissioners.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Anybody in the audience have a comment? Okay. If there's no further discussion, do you hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. No further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay, motion carries. Do you have anything else, Liam?
Just one thing and then you guys can adjourn if you would like. I mean, you have been provided, um, new laptops, they were in the bags at the dais for you. Um, they should be the same login password that you used for your iPads, so same sort of logins.
Well, for me, I never have, had a login or password, so.
So I will get with you so we can get you a login and password.
Okay.
It should be the same login, login and password for your emails.
Otherwise, it's just a black sea anchor, you know?
Same, same, same here, Liam.
Yeah.
Um, okay. And I have a, before we do adjourn, I have a question about something that, um, a citizen came to me about and maybe I can get an explanation, get some input from the board. You know, I know we have a rule where if, you know, if you just want to sell off a piece of your land, unless it's a parent parcel, you have to subdivide it and you have to plat it, is that right? Brad, is that you?
I'm going to let Brad Tippin answer that one.
Huh?
David?
No, we're good.
Well, I mean, there's a state law that if you subdivide it more than once, then it triggers the requirement to subdivide.
No, the state statute says.
Okay, wait a minute, let me get my question out so we don't go around and circle. We have a situation here in the county where there is a family that owns a substantial size piece of property. Let's say, pick a number, let's say five thousand acres. Within their family, the parent dies, leaves it to the sons. They decide to divide this property up and put it in the sons' names. There's three sons, picking that as an example. One of the sons then has a son, goes off into the world and comes back as a veterinarian and he wants to have his business here. And his father wants to give him ten acres of his property that he got. And now he's being told that he has to go plat it. And he's got his, he, he's got his building permit, he's got his everything else. What I don't understand, it may be a law, maybe, maybe he has to plat it according to the law, I don't know, but it seems to me odd that if you have a child, you can't give him a piece of your own land without plating it.
Okay, so that's a, a, I'm not saying oddly specific question, but, uh, I think I know the situation that probably prompted this discussion. I've been in contact with some folks about it already. Um, there's a couple of layers to this. What is the state layer? The state layer, like David was, uh, explaining, was talking about requires.
Oh, ho, 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 hold it, that's now.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let him finish, let him finish.
There's a layer that requires subdividing and then the, the local county government, we have our certain exemptions that we can allow to that process. We have three different ways to achieve the subdividing and then there's a, a number of exemptions. One of the exemptions that we have is called limited family lot division. Um, that is an option in some cases. There are strings attached to that, which may or may not be something once a person hears about it that they want to actually participate in, but it, it really does kind of depend on a lot of more specific details related to the situation.
What are the strings, are you, is that?
There are some very specific definitions of what family is and what it means, uh, as far as passing from one landowner to another landowner.
In this case, it would be father, son.
Subsequent landowners are also bound by that same thing. If the, if he gives it to his son, then the son wants to give it to somebody else, they're going to have to subdivide it through the standard procedure. They're going to have to come back. So it actually places a burden on the next generation. So we tend to, most people don't, they're trying to do it to not burden the next generation, so we usually don't recommend that as a first option because we do have on larger properties like that, we do have some things like minor rural subdivisions, uh, and no improvement plat, plans that are a little bit of an easier subdivision process that can be done to create that same situation without those burdens.
You mentioned there's two other options as well besides that first one. You said there's three.
There's three, there's a standard, there's a standard subdivision process that any subdivision has to go through. Uh, then there's a minor rural subdivision, which is kind of a reduced amount of requirements. It's a limited number of lots that you can create. You have to have certain types of land use and zoning, uh, in the area to do it. Then there's also the, uh, a no improvement, it's called a no improvement plat, but it's really a subdivision plan. That's also something similar. That's when you have lots that already have water and sewer out front or whatever it may be, uh, everything for the infrastructure is already there, pretty much.
So these three options defined by state statute.
These are, these are county.
County ordinance.
County ways to address the state statute.
All right, thank you, Brad. Um, so if I wanted to get more specific or be set up a face to face with these people to get this together?
Yeah, we can, we can have a, a, a meeting, uh, to discuss all the options. We do it during pre-ops, they can come, they can talk with us, we can, we've had a few emails back and forth on situations that this is the individual, then I've already presented all of this information to them and, and they declined.
Yeah, great.
But, but we can do whatever, we'll, we'll sit down with whomever, talk about.
Okay, Brad, what, I mean, uh, John, J O N.
Two things, I'm very aware of the case that you're talking about. Mr. Tippin and I had lunch today and spoke of this case already. And I spoke to a county commissioner about that on the way here, but just a clarification on the state statute, so that there's no misconception. The state does not mandate that you plat land every time that you divide it into three or more parcels. It says if you create a plat, it shall follow these standards, but it doesn't require you to plat. That's a local decision. So don't, I don't want there to be misconception that the state is forcing a plat.
No, but I mean, is it a local decision or a local ordinance?
It's our own local land development code that requires the plat, but the state statute does not require a plat. It says if you create a plat, it shall meet these minimum standards.
Gotcha.
But it, but it does define a subdivision as divisional land of the three or more lots.
For the purposes of that statute.
So it's, it's something the BCC could address. They could address the existing LBC and ordinance.
Well, I'm sure that, I'm not going to play county attorney here, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm just, I just think from a practical point of view, if, if I'm a father and I have a son that wants to build on my land, I own a hundred acres. And I, I can't get, if I, let's say I have five sons, I can't give them each of them five acres while I'm going through.
There's a.
Living as family.
I, I don't think it would probably be proper, I know a whole lot more about this case than I'm going to say about this. I think the problem is, is there's some, he can use, there's a, there's a section in our code that's called the limited family lot division that contemplates this kind of thing.
You, you mentioned that.
The difficulty here in this particular situation is how the property is owned. It's not owned in, in, by an individual person, it's owned by a corporation. And so then there becomes the question, is a corporation a family? Brad and I asked, I asked Brad the question at lunch and he does not know the answer to this. For instance, are the officers and directors of the corporation all family members? This is going to take some legal interpretation, but there, the code is actually set up to address the situation. It's just that because of how they've chosen to hold title to that property, it creates some conflict with how our code is written, but I'm betting that a great legal mind like Mr. Goldstein can resolve it.
And I think part of the problem is that this may be the first split that's below, because there's an exception if it's over forty acres, right, Brad?
Yeah, there, there are actually exceptions that could apply based on the size of the parcel that's created here. So we, it, it, I, I have to go back and look, there's very specific, it's essentially, if, if the future land use is looking for a higher density area, you have a large piece of land, you can get closer to that density by, you know, doing some larger pieces, cutting into two pieces and two medium pieces or something like that, basically. It's kind of the, the dumbed down version of how it, how it reads. Um, and there's three different ways that that can happen is based on different land use categories, but.
I'm just saying that.
This particular one could do that, I believe, I would have to go back and look, but, but the parcel, I believe that was created, again, not getting into too many specifics, uh, would have been too small to meet any of those criteria.
Yeah, and it's just slightly under ten acres, but it's the same piece I'm talking about.
I would just say, from what I know of the case, it sounds like if you put a couple of good minds in the room, there's a solution to this problem. And it's just, and it's simply because of how they hold title to the property. I think that can probably be solved. A good lawyer should be able to solve this.
So who else besides David should I have in the room?
He might need a real estate lawyer, from what, what he's describing it, but, because I don't know how they structured all of these conveyances.
Right, and it's, this isn't the right forum, but yes.
I, I did already recommend a meeting with, uh, certain individuals that I think would be relevant to that discussion. So I think that's already worked.
Would you, assuming this is the same group, would you let me know then when that meeting is? You've already arranged a meeting.
No, I haven't arranged it yet, they're in the, in the process.
Isn't it amazing how quick word spreads?
Right? That's pretty impressive.
Yeah. Okay. Is the last name beginning with a D?
Yeah, it's the same.
Yes.
Far too many coincidental specifics there.
You don't get nineteen more questions.
All right. Okay, so, uh, yeah, let's, let's get a meeting together if you don't mind then, and, uh, so we can get this resolved.
So it does, the meeting that was requested does include another public official, so.
As long as it's not a planning commission member, that's not a problem.
Okay.
So are you going to make the contact?
It's already been made.
It's in the works.
Once they coordinate it, I will ensure that you're invited.
Thank you.
And I will let you go instead of me.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'll, I'll probably leave it up to them as to who they want to invite, but, uh.
Very good.
Mr. Murray is willing to defer.
You probably be the better one to go, John.
Well, it, it, it actually goes to a comment David made, that when I've, I'm still learning all the specifics, but the more I've learned about it, it's, it, this can be fixed with the right real estate attorney, right real estate experience and how we hold title.
Okay. Okay. Let's do it. Okay, great. Just want to solve the problem and I, the reason I wanted to do it in this forum is because I, I wanted your, all of your input, so I can't do that otherwise, so.
And we do have three different process, I mean, it's not just one process. We have three different processes for three different types of scenarios and then we have essentially four different exceptions where you can carve out a property, uh, either through the three different means that David was mentioning, um, or, or the limited family lot division. So we, we've got a lot of options, I don't know that other places have as many as we have, but we've got quite a few ways. It's just when you hit the, something that's in a weird niche, they can't hit any of them.
Well, and then somebody wanted to add a property and they divided it in, uh, six or seven, and then they got mad because that triggered a school concurrency with the U.
And there's that.
And then they got upset about that, but it's.
Then you got to build a school on your property.
You're always trying to create a problem.
I know, I know.
Would you just send Richard next time?
Okay. Is he here?
No, not really.
Okay, anyway, have anything else for the good of the cause?
I was going to do a jury.
Oh, me, I was just going to do it. Second, second. Further discussion on paper?
The record reflects that the chairman did not have any complaints.
Look at that.
That's because he was on a sugar roll in the other. It's because this, this.